Thank you. Is Kim going to come tonight, or is she doing remote?
Remote.
Didn't expect quite frankly, that it's time to really totally get that.
Yeah.
And if I had to explain it, you're still not necessarily making the connection, but I wanted to let you know.
I got you.
I don't think you do, but okay.
To call this meeting to order, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individUALS, liberty and justice for all.
Please start with a roll call.
Council President O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
And Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. We're going to start off tonight with a special presentation. Joining us tonight is David Foster to give us our legislative agenda update.
All right, good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor, Council President. I'm here to introduce David Foster. It's been a year, or maybe a couple of months since he was here. So I just wanted to introduce David and go through a couple of items before I turn over the legislative agenda to him. I wanted to let everybody know the agenda creation started September with the staff taking a look at our previous legislative agenda. And a lot of this will be carry through from last year and then subtracting some of the stuff that was passed or is no longer valid. This session will be a light one, and the last step, of course, is presenting it to council. But last month, in November, we delivered it to the Equity Commission, and I have some notes on the next slide to kind of let you know. It was a very good educational. I know Mr. Mayor was there in the audience, but it was very good. And some of their comments explain what they thought. When we asked what they would like to see or what they thought, the quote was anything involving equity. So any measures or anything that comes out, that comes up as a hot topic, anything involving equity, Renton would like to be involved. The education piece was a lot about money that's been allocated for Renton. I know we had talked about Sound Transit shortly, a short time ago. And some of those things that were promised to Renton or already allocated, the fact that Renton has to kind of fight to keep that there. And they thought, well, that doesn't sound fair that it could be moved or taken away. So that led to the third bullet, which is the Equity Commission involvement. They wanted to know as a body how they could present, how they could be representative for Renton. And David provided some good feedback to them as far as whether it's a letter, testifying, getting them involved, because they seem very interested in talking to local legislators. So that will be happening. So it was a very good meeting. It was very, it took us just, we were only scheduled, I think, a half hour. We went an hour with them. So a lot of good questions, a lot of good insight. So with that, I will turn this over to David.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mr. Mayor. It's good to see you all today. Just to touch a little bit on some of the basics going into the legislative session. Mr. Van Bailey said it's a light session. By that, we mean a short session. It's a 60-day legislative session, begins January 8th, will end on March 7th. Usually it's, well, every other cycle, it starts and ends on the same day. We've got a leap year coming up, so it's the 8th to the 7th as opposed to the 8th to the 8th. And in the second year of the biennium, we do see the supplemental budget come out. So the legislature passed and the governor approved a budget earlier this year. That runs from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025. So this will be the time to look at revenue, look at caseloads, the forecasts and whatnot, and make adjustments as they go. What we won't see this year, which you may remember from two supplemental budgets ago, was a lot of new federal money coming in. And so this is going to be back to what I'm going to call "normal," which dates back to 2018, when we had the last normal budget prior to COVID kicking in. And we'll see that for all three, the operating, the capital, and the transportation budgets. And then we did go back, or they went back, I should say, to almost all in person. The two things that I think that changed and remained during the 23 legislative session, and I think going forward, and I think these are good things, is one, virtual testimony is now accepted and is quite common. That's what happened for two years, and that's going to stay. It means that somebody that's driving for three or four hours to get to Olympia at 8:00 in the morning to testify for one minute and driving home for three and four hours doesn't have to do that. And I think that's a good thing, obviously. And then also just meetings, ongoing meetings, especially with constituents. Same idea, don't have to drive down for a 10- or 15-minute meeting, can do so virtually with your local legislators. Nothing changed. Obviously, we didn't have any elections this year. So we've got 58 Democrats in the House, 40 Republicans, and 29 Democrats in the Senate and 20 Republicans. We are going to see an interesting, I think, some interesting changes, though, after the 24 legislative session and going into the 24 elections. We are going to have four open statewide seats, at least, of course, headed by the governor. But we've also got the Attorney General, who's running for governor. The Commissioner of Public Lands is now an open seat, or will be an open seat, and the Insurance Commissioner. And in theory, there could be others as well. Likewise, we'll see, or in addition to that, we'll see senators who have announced, House members who have announced they're running for certain offices, and so obviously, there's a domino effect. So I think after the 24 elections, going into the 25 legislative session, the budget writing session, we will see a much different-looking, both set up for statewide office holders as well as the House and Senate overall. The numbers might not change, or maybe change a little, but I think the personalities may change. Going into the 24 legislative session, we're going to see a number of the same issue areas highlighted that you've seen before. Nothing really new here, housing, homelessness, behavioral health, all sort of tie together. But there are both separate and tied components to each of those three issue areas. And then I think we're going to see another push on the local revenue side, both related to the property tax, which we can talk about, as well as some sales tax issues for both pointed issue areas as well as more general issue areas. And then, of course, there'll be the issue area that we weren't expecting, that gets hyped up and garners a lot of attention sometime in January, February. Just as a reminder, you have two legislative districts that touch Renton. The 5th district barely touches Renton, but does. So we've got Senator Mullet, Rep. Callan, and Rep. Ramos representing the 5th. And then, of course, we've got the 11th district, and you all know Senator Hasegawa, Rep. Burquist, and Rep. Hackney. That, of course, is the, Renton is the bulk of the 11th district along with the city of Tuck Willa. So that's just a, oh, I might have more. Hold on. Go ahead. Oh, so I think this is starting to touch on some of the agenda priorities. But I'll stop there very quickly and see if there are just any questions about the makeup of the legislature or some of the issues that may be coming up, or do you want to just keep going?
Yep, keep going.
And I'm going to point out that these legislative priorities are the department's priorities. They are your priorities. These are not my priorities. I'm here to help try to put these into place and move them forward. But this is an agenda that is the city of Renton. And so a lot of what you're going to see, I think, is a carry forward from earlier this year, or I should say, the agenda that you all passed about this time last year. On the transportation side, it's really holding on to what we've got. Ed touched on that a moment ago. I don't think we're going to see any big new investments this year, or excuse me, in 2024. But we certainly want to make sure that we're holding on to the investments that have been planned in and around the city, be it highways, large street projects, transit projects, and the like. On the racial and justice and equity side, again, continue to seek outside funding and tools to ensure equality for all, not just in the city of Renton, I would say, but throughout Washington State. And then on the issues that we will certainly be watching, local government's interesting because you have, probably by the end of this upcoming session, there will be somewhere in the range of 4,000 bills introduced. To be fair, a lot of those are duplicates between the House and the Senate, or some similarities. But local government probably touches on somewhere between a third, or they touch on somewhere between a third to half related to local government. So we end up watching a lot of different issue areas and covering a lot of different issue areas. And so this is kind of the gamut, but budget and fiscal issues, criminal justice, behavioral health, public safety, economic development, infrastructure, housing, environmental sustainability, of course, land use. Land use kind of ties into one of the bullets up above. Local government in general, that could have been the first one, it could be the last one. It certainly covers a lot of areas, transportation, wastewater, stormwater, and utilities. All of those will be, we will look for pieces of legislation or budget items that may have an effect on the work that you all are doing here and your constituents here in the city, and try to make sure we are pushing for as good an outcome as possible. And with that, looks like questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you so much, David, for the presentation. And we know historically, in these short sessions, legislators are a little more risk averse, a little more, a little more.
A little more.
Do we expect to see anything around middle housing and potentially tweaking some of those middle housing bills that were passed last session?
I think we will still see some issues in bills related to housing, zoning, infrastructure. I don't know that we will see much in the way of tweaking, as you said, what happened earlier this year. I think, you know, maybe we're looking at a year or two out. Often, it's hard to, and not to say it doesn't happen, but more often than not, it's hard to change something that only went into effect, you know, July 1, or whenever, you know, a piece of legislation went into effect. There's not enough data, there's not enough information to show if there are problems, or frankly, if it's working. And so I don't think we'll see much in the way of changes to legislation that was approved in 2023. I do think we will see more legislation related to those issues. And I know that there's a push from cities and counties, and I know some legislators are hearing it as well, to kind of slow down and let's say, hey, can we just pause for a year, maybe two, to try to figure out what's working, what's not, and then come back to try to make those changes.
It would be nice to be able to work on the things that have been passed versus having to continue to play catch-up.
Agreed, Councilmember. They start stacking and layering up. And I know if one of your department heads were here, she'd be jumping up and down and saying hallelujah to what you just said. So hopefully, we'll see a little bit of a pause this year.
Along those lines, I know the governor was looking into a TOD bill of some sorts. Do you know anything, or have you heard anything about that?
Nothing specific yet. I understand there is going to still be a governor request, transit-oriented development bill related to housing around those types of facilities. But we haven't seen a draft yet. I should say that, starting late last week, legislation can be introduced now. New legislation can be introduced in advance of the legislative session. So that's about, let's say, 30 days out. So, but we haven't seen a bill along those lines yet, but we're expecting one.
Yes, Councilmember.
Based on your experience and your years working in Olympia, considering what you said, that they're going to be already four elected officials running, and several of the senators and several of the legislators trying to start as soon as possible their campaigns in a short session like this, what is your perception? Do you think they're going to try to finish as soon as possible so they can get out of there and they start campaigning and everything? Or they're going to take their time? What do you think?
Well, I think there's going to be a push to get out on 60 days. And I don't know that there's anything that prevents that at this time. I guess there's always something that could come up. But I would anticipate that they will bang the gavel on March 7th and leave town. And then the campaigns will start up pretty quickly.
Thank you.
I think Councilmember Rivera was first, and then McGurven.
Thank you for the presentation. And I was reading through the legislative agenda, and all of it looks absolutely incredible. And just more for the record, in regards to the criminal justice, public safety legislation, supporting enhancing, supporting the enhancement more so of police vehicle pursuits. Let me say that three times fast with my lisp. What are we looking for more specifically? Because I know there were some rollbacks last year, or last session, which was earlier this year, moving from public cause to reasonable suspicion. What else are we looking for there more specifically?
I think that's, I want to almost say, a placeholder in case there is legislation that's moved forward to provide additional flexibility for local jurisdictions and not be perhaps constrained to only what the state is putting forward. But I don't, there's nothing that I'm aware of that we're pushing from the city of Renton's perspective at this time.
Thank you.
Councilmember McGurven.
Sorry. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So love to see the transportation folk, especially on the active transportation trails, on the document that's attached, picture of East Trail right there, fantastic, love it. The trail, I wanted to ask, was a follow-up to the 500,000 that was allocated. And it's perfect that we have all these folks in Renton Rowing Center in the room, the Sam Chastain Trail. Is there any follow-up on that this session, or is that something we're holding over for the '25, '27 biennium?
Well, there was, as you mentioned, $500,000 allocated to some work related to a segment that I don't think exists. And the city at this time is in the process of trying to figure out how to work with the legislature to spend those dollars. And so when you say "hold over," I'm not sure. The dollars want to go away in this, in this cycle, so that won't change. Is that what you mean, or?
I think that and the next steps, pending the outcome of that money. So we haven't obviously spent it yet, so we're still trying to obviously use that as the feasibility step. So I guess my question is more in terms of queuing up the potential capital house to actually build a thing, I think, is what I'm interested in. But that's obviously a little premature.
Yeah, I'm going to turn that one back to the mayor and to Ed and to you all.
There was a lot of research that had to be done. There was different agencies we had to go through. So it's going to take all of that just to figure out if it's feasible. So we did not have quite a plan of how the money's going to be funded if we get through that hurdle. I think there was four or five different environmental agencies and tribal and everything to figure out if it was feasible. So we were going to use that towards figuring out if we can do that. So there's been no plan for the construction.
I will say, if I can just add, those dollars, once in the capital budget, not only exist, if you will, until June 30, 2025, at that time, they can be carried forward. So if there was a problem and the dollars weren't spent by the 25, end of the '25 session, carry them into the next biennium.
Yeah, and to add to that, the project, although it was preliminary, for that very short segment came back. The numbers came back just staggeringly high in the tens of millions. So we have to make sure that that's a project that's a priority of the council also. So there's more discussion to be had, so. Councilmember, yes, O'Halloran.
Just getting back to the statement about trying to retain funding that's already been earmarked for projects around Renton. We just came out of a meeting with Sound Transit. And, you know, we have experienced quite a number of delays in a lot of the projects that have been earmarked for Renton. And I was also on the I-405167 Executive Advisory Committee this morning, where I learned that the Northeast 8th Direct Access Ramp, which was identified as a key component of regional transportation in 1996, is being proposed to move out another 10 years to 2039. My understanding is that those dollars were funded this year, earlier this year. It was a huge celebration and win. And so when we talk about making sure that we retain the dollars that are earmarked for Renton, I sincerely hope that that's one of the things we are specifically talking about. Because that's been 43, that would be 43 years. It's already going to be 33 years. So we got the funding in this past legislation. God forbid, they give it to Iskola.
And that is a priority. I have to remind you, he's on our team.
No, I know, I know. I'm just, just after these two meetings today, you can understand where my frustration is.
Sure.
Yeah, and that, yeah, it's very frustrating. It's definitely a priority going into this session.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
I want to talk along about the bridge around the trail, the Sanchez thing.
Okay, yes.
I know that that has not been identified right now as a priority of the council. But my guess is that I'm not the only one who has received a phone call from Representative Burquist in this table to, even if right now, we have not identified as a priority to the council, because the funding is there for a study. Representative Burquist is expecting information from the Parks and Recreation Department. So the only thing that I will prioritize is if we can provide that information as is convenient for Representative Burquist and keep us informed, the communication back and forward. So when he talks to him and calls him, obviously, he cannot provide anything because administration has not provided him the information. So I will put it as a priority for the council at this moment to please provide the information to David so he can get back to him.
Yes. Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. The question I have, and I really appreciate the legislative agenda focusing a lot on the transportation infrastructure. So the question I have is, in terms of economic and formal housing, do you know of any bills that are potentially to be dropped in terms of homeownership? Kind of piggyback on what legislature has found this previous year?
I don't have any specifics, specific pieces at this time. I know there's going to be a continued look at, and this is a little bit different, Councilmember, than I think your question, but there's going to be a continued look at a potential for a new REIT, real estate excise tax, that would be targeted at either the state or the local level. It would be targeted for additional housing and infrastructure. I think there's going to continue to be a, not just in this upcoming year and not in the next biennium, but I think for probably the next decade, we're going to be talking about housing issues in the state of Washington and trying to figure out ways, and by "we," I mean elected officials, trying to figure out ways to provide housing for the people that are currently in the state, for those that are not currently housed, and for those people that are coming to the state. So we'll get into the legislative session. Certainly be reviewing the bills that are dropped early, as well as those that are, there's usually a flood that first week, and be able to take a good look and see what comes up related to housing, homelessness, zoning, all of the different infrastructure, all the different components that really go into that very large issue area. That's not, I know that's not a, I don't have a specific answer for you.
Yeah, and I ask that just out of curiosity, but also I know that from the agenda today, we're not voting on this. Because I know last year, at the same time, we voted on the big bill, and so it's just kind of information.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Maybe I have one thing, Mr. Mayor. Last year, or earlier this year, I confused myself. I say "last year" when I mean "earlier this year" for session. I'll say "next," or say "next year," if that actually makes sense. But I confuse myself when I talk about the legislative session. We had four of you came down, four of the council members came down to visit last year during the, earlier this year during the legislative session. And the mayor, Mr. Mayor, you were down as well. And we will certainly be checking in to see who might want to, if anybody, come down to Olympia during the session and try to set up a similar day, and maybe days, for all of you. So just expect that we'll be reaching out, try to see what we can do. And I look forward to having you down there, whatever day that may be.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, David. Yeah, normally, traditionally, we go there, the normally AWC City Days Action is, it starts on Wednesday, and we have chosen to go on Tuesdays just because it was convenient to be there for those two days. But certainly, please, as soon as you can, coordinate with our chief staff of the council, Judith. So she will be able to call us and figure out which day, because I know that their agendas of the legislators are getting very, very busy. And definitely, if we're going down there, we want to be able to see as many as we can, you know?
Yep, I'll fill up your calendar. As long as I know you're coming, I'll fill it up.
Thank you very much, David.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you very much, David. Appreciate the presentation. All right, we're going to move on now. Give Ed a minute to move seats, put a different hat on. And next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That's it.
Oh, that was quick. Okay. Very short. I didn't have time to even space out. Okay, we're moving on now to audience comment. We do have a number of people signed up to speak in person. When I call your name, please step up to the podium, give your name, city of residence, and what you'll be speaking on. You'll have three minutes. There's a timer right in front of you. And when the light turns yellow, please wrap up your comments. And the first person is Aurora Martin. Aurora. Aurora Martin? No, Aurora. Okay, changed your mind. All right, next is Kent McClary.
Good evening, Mayor Pivone and City Councilmembers. I'm Kent McClary. I live at 839 Linwood Avenue Northeast in Renton. I teach at Lindbergh High School, and I am Chair of the Renton Rowing Center Board of Directors. I'm here with four of our youth rowers to report to you ahead of our 10th year as tenants in your Renton City boathouse. First, we wanted to thank Parks and Trails Directors Colleen Hunzaker and Facilities Coordinator Lori Lowman and Parks Maintenance Manager Steve Brown for all their support this year. And since it came up in conversation, yes, we are very interested in working with you on the Sam Chastain Trail extension. We've grown a lot since we spoke to you last year. We've grown bigger and more diverse. We're now an independent 501(c)(3), and we have Board of Directors supporting our Executive Director, Rachel Wong, who's here tonight also. And we've learned a lot. We've set a precedent of sound financial management and including everyone in our diverse community in rowing. So you could say our growth has almost matched our learning curve this year. We have 50 adults, 25 high school rowers, and 16 middle school rowers who've won medals for Renton, representing Renton at races around the region. And we sent our first rower to the Youth National Championships back in Florida. One way we inverse Renton's diversity is just by teaching rowing. So in August, we hosted Camp Lucy, which was a two-week camp where middle school girls learn about themselves and teamwork. And they're taught to think, hey, I can do that. And we collaborated on a Learn Row Camp with the West Hill Community Association. And we collaborated on a Learn to Row camp with the West Hill Community Association, and we brought a dozen Skyway youth down to learn rowing and teamwork. Both those camps reach young people who would have never had a chance to row otherwise. And we shared the lake with hundreds of people by renting paddle boards and kayaks all summer. And we just partnered with a dragon boat club called the WAM Dragon Boat Club, which competes all over the world but needed a home base. And so now they paddle from Renton Rowing Center. And they will help us make Renton a regional center for healthy water sports. One of our projects is more seats. If people row, they need a seat in a boat. And if we have 40 youth rowing in the same practice, we need at least 10 boats. So a brand-new four-person rowing shell costs about $35,000. Our initial costs are really high. So we're really proud to have updated and expanded our fleet by eight seats just on our limited budgets so far this year. And we started Renton Rowing Center for youth. So youth rowers could share their experience, could share, learn to row, and learn the grit and skill and teamwork that rowing requires. And they'd like to share their experiences with you, with your permission. I will be here to answer questions for you after the meeting. And we invite you to come, come along with us, come ride in the launch, see a practice, or come row with us, better yet. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for supporting our youth at Renton Rowing Center.
Okay, next up is Kai Powers.
Greetings, Mayor Pavone and the Renton City Council members. My name is Kai Powers. I live at 832 Lincoln Avenue Southeast here in Renton, and I'm a senior attending Hazen High School. I'm a part of the Renton Rowing Center High School program and have been rowing here since the early 2020, when the pandemic had just started. I found sport, well, actually, back when I was attending a freshman orientation, and Mr. McClery set up a Learn to Row booth with a rowing machine there. And being that, I had just stopped playing baseball. I decided that I would give it a shot. So about a week later, I had my family sign me up, and I was rowing with a pair of oars in my hands, struggling to stay up. Now, I've moved on to competing at regional competitions and meeting some of my best friends here. The Renton Rowing Center is a place that I come after school, stay healthy, make friends, and call home. Community is a big part of the Renton Rowing Center, and we give everyone we can an opportunity to learn to row and bring attention to the sport. I can proudly say that this is a boathouse of welcome and opportunity for everyone. So with that, I strongly encourage you, city council members and Mayor Pavone, to support the Renton Rowing Center, continuing to build the community through sport. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Ellie Anderson.
Hello, Mayor Pavone. There we go. Hello, Mayor Pavone and city council members. My name is Ellie Anderson, and I live at 14835 161st Court Southeast in Renton, Washington. I'm a junior at Liberty High School, and I am a co-captain at the Renton Rowing Center, where I have been rowing for a little over two years now. As someone who has always played a different sport growing up, when the pandemic hit, I had no sport to play. That's when I first heard about rowing. My dad kept bringing it up in conversations, saying it would be an interesting sport to do. At the time, I dismissed his comments. Why would I want to do that? But after much persistence on his part, I eventually agreed to join. And I'm so glad I did. I found an amazing community at the Renton Rowing Center, where I met some of my closest friends and some of my hardest workouts. I got the opportunity to teach rowing, the sport I love, to many different people of all ages and learn many important life lessons along the way. Thank you, Renton City Council members, for continuing to support the Renton Rowing Center.
You. Next up is Audrey Stotin. Audrey? Oh, there you go.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Pavone and city council members. My name is Audrey Stotin, and I am a current resident at 15719 Southeast 160th Place, Renton, Washington. I attended Kent Ridge High School as a sophomore, and the impact that Renton Rowing Center and the community has had on me is beyond words, but I'll try tonight. I rowed the youth program at Renton Rowing Center and started in the spring of my seventh-grade year. I took some time off from spring of my eighth-grade year to fall freshman year, returning in the winter. I was worried with how the program had changed in those nine months or so, but I was pleasantly surprised with the updated boathouse and welcoming community. These changes couldn't have been made without the support of Renton. As I became more immersed with the sport, I was able to fall in love with rowing all over again. Our program catapulted due to the fundraising and support we received from others. I found myself pushing harder and learning more from not only rowing, but from everybody in the boathouse as well. I learned some valuable lessons from practices out on the lake and from the opportunity I was given to race last spring and this fall, including an international regatta in Victoria, B.C. We were able to race at higher levels and push ourselves both mentally and physically past limits I couldn't imagine. Through the program, I was able to get rowing and racing experience, but I was also given the opportunity to give back to our community. This summer, I volunteered with a couple of Learn to Row programs, teaching kids the basics of rowing with my fellow teammates and with the assistance of our coaches. It was great to teach the Renton community about something I love and give back after getting so many opportunities. Thank you for having me speak, and please consider continuing supporting Renton Rowing Center. Thank you.
You. All right, next up is Imani Ford.
Hello, Mayor and city council members. My name is Imani Ford, and I live at 2606 Northeast Forest Street in the city of Renton. I attend McKnight Middle School, and I'm in the eighth grade. I have been in the, I have been a rower on the Renton Rowing Center youth team for two years. Renton Rowing Center helps me with fitness, team-building skills, and to experience something different. The instructors, instructors teach me and my teammates how to row. And the Renton Rowing Center is special to me because it's a place where I can be myself and have fun with my teammates. Sorry. It's a place where I can be myself with my teammates and have fun. Please continue to support the Renton, please continue to support the Renton Rowing Center. Thank you.
Good job. No need to be nervous. You did a great job.
All right, do we have anybody signed up to speak online?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Well, I want to say thank you for the rowing team for being here. I've always thought that our rowing center is one of the best-kept secrets in Renton, frankly. And it's, it's, it's heartwarming to see the kids come up and speak in front of council like that. Yeah, you shouldn't be nervous. It's, it's, I stand up there, I get nervous when I talk to council, so. So the, I'm hoping, though, this, I think it's Christmas Day that the George Clooney movie comes out, Boys in the Boat, about the U-Dub row teams, though. I think there's going to be an interest in rowing starting next year, so. So thank you, thank you again for, for coming and sharing with us. Okay, moving on, we have consent agenda. There are three items. Are there any items that council would like pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
Hearing none, I move the council concur with the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, I did not see your hand, yes.
Yeah, I, in regarding to the meeting minutes from last meeting, wanted to make an amendment to it in terms of the audience comment section, whether there was a motion made to reduce the public speaker's comment from three minutes to two minutes.
You want to change minute meeting?
She's wanting to change, is it not reflected? Okay, because I think there's two nays, so I don't know.
Well, we took a voice vote, and so generally, I don't write down the nays for voice votes, just roll call votes.
Yeah.
So, but if you'd like that to be in there, then I can, I can make that change, and those minutes will be approved next meeting.
Yeah, we'd like to have a discussion.
Okay. Was, uh...
Yeah, it was 3-2. It was 3-2 the vote, yeah.
No, it was 3, it was 3-4. Councilmember, myself, Councilmember McGurven, and Councilmember...
And it was 4-3.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I can make that change. There was no, was there a second to the motion she made?
Um, yes, there's a, yes, Councilmember McGurven just seconded it.
Oh, no, I thought you meant before, not just now. I thought you were asking to clarify.
There's, yeah, is there a second to this motion?
That was not for this motion, my apologies.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
Still a question of procedure here. Should we then pull it from the consent agenda and approve the consent agenda minus item A? If the maker of the motion could, their motion, that would be their next order of business.
Or you can make a motion to amend them now and then approve it as amended.
Or that. Do we have that motion?
I think that's what the council members are trying to...
Is that the motion you'd like to make, then?
Yeah, to amend the three, like the reduction in the, in the comments, probably comments section.
Reflect the votes.
Okay, all right, it's been moved and seconded to adjust the minute meetings from last week to acknowledge the fact that there was a 4-3 vote in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries, that will be amended. So now we're going back to the original motion, which is to approve the consent agenda as published, including, including the amended minutes. Any discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Mr. Mayor, just, so I can clarify, the minutes will be, the amended minutes will be posted in the agenda packet tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
And just for a, also a point of clarification, it doesn't seem like it was reflected at all in the meeting minutes that we reduced the time. That's, I think, was one of the point of, point that was being made. It wasn't just the vote, it wasn't documented at all.
I'll make sure that's in there. That was an oversight.
All right, we're moving on to unfinished business. Council President O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Nope, not yet. Okay, Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has two reports to present.
Excuse me? As, Councilmember O'Halloran was whispering to me while you spoke. I'm so sorry, I did not hear what you just said.
The Transportation Committee has two committee reports.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, are we ready? Transportation Aviation Committee, committee report. This is regarding a professional services agreement with SCJ Alliance for Design Engineering Services for the 116th Avenue Southeast Sidewalk Project. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with Shea Carjul Incorporated, doing business as SCJ Alliance, to design engineering services totaling $165,657.05 for the 116th Avenue Southeast Sidewalk Project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the next report from the Transportation Aviation Committee is regarding Change Order Number Nine to a Contract with Pavetta Brothers Construction. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Change Order Number Nine to Contract 22163 with Pavetta Brothers Construction Incorporated in the amount of $103,853.14 that PSC, Lumen, and Comcast will reimburse for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four project. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Aye. I mean, second. The last video of the year.
By Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, we're on to Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two committees report on. There was a slight error in the Committee on Committees report, so we are going to do it again.
Okay, Committee on Committees, committee report. The revised 2024 Council Committee Assignments. The Committee on Committees recommends the following Council Committee Assignments for 2024. Community Services, second and fourth Mondays at 3:00 p.m., James Elverson Jr., Chair, Ryan McGurven, Vice Chair, Ruth Perez, Member. Finance, second and fourth Mondays at 4:00 p.m., Valerie O'Halloran, Chair, Ruth Perez, Vice Chair, Ryan McGurven, Member. Planning and Development Committee, second and fourth Mondays at 5:00 p.m., Ruth Perez, Chair, James Elverson Jr., Vice Chair, Valerie O'Halloran, Member. Public Safety Committee, third Monday at 4:00 p.m., Carmen Rivera, Chair, Valerie O'Halloran, Vice Chair, Kim Convon, Member. Transportation Committee, first and third Mondays at 5:00 p.m., Ryan McGurven, Chair, Kim Convon, Vice Chair, Carmen Rivera, Member. And finally, Utilities Committee, first and third Mondays at 3:00 p.m., Kim Convon, Chair, Carmen Rivera, Vice Chair, and James Elverson Jr., Member. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor? This is again, I move that the council concur at the Committee on Committees report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the council concur with the Committee on Committees report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, and now the Planning and Development Committee has two committee reports.
The first Planning and Development Committee report is regarding Title IV Doc. 18 Group C. This Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the 2023 Title IV Doc. 18 Group C Item D228 regarding bonus density. The committee further recommends that an ordinance for this item be prepared and presented for first reading when it is complete. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
That's Councilmember Prince.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding an amendment to the Bicycles and Trails Master Plan. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to amend the Bicycles and Trails Master Plan, and that a resolution adopting the amendment be prepared and presented for adoption when it is complete. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince.
Move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has six committee reports to present.
All right, the first report is regarding vouchers. Finance Committee approves the following payments. Account payable, total payment of $24,171,676.16 for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and six wire transfers. Two, payroll, total payment of $3,760,284.59 for payroll vouchers, including 1,341 direct deposits and 18 checks. This is the October 16th through 31st and November 1st through 15th pay periods. Number three is Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling $42,191.42 and municipal court vouchers totaling $20,356 even. This is signed by the committee chair and members. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor? Wait, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a grant from the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to improve an interagency agreement with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force Program to accept $5,000 in grant funds for the use of the state and local overtime and authorized expense strategic initiative. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Hallerson, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report from Finance Committee is a reimbursement agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the two-year transportation demand management implementation agreement with WashDOT that provides a cost reimbursement to the city of $155,400, signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor. I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report from Finance Committee is regarding an agreement with Risk Solutions Unlimited for Safety Agent Services. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the Professional Services Agreement with Risk Solutions Unlimited LLC for a total of $774,919 for the Safety Agent Services Pilot Project. The agreement will be funded by HB 1590 Contracted Services Funds. The required budget adjustment will be included as part of the first carry, first quarter carry forward budget ordinance scheduled to occur in early 2024. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the renewal of the city's liability insurance policies for 2024. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 2024 liability insurance policies through the city's insurance broker, Alliant, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the implementing documents in order to bind the insurance policies. The total premium cost for 2024 will not exceed $915,000. The binder agreement will be transmitted by the broker for execution prior to January first, 2024. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final Finance Committee Report is in agreement with, or with, yeah, with Pewter Sound Energy to waive and release their cash surety for a deferral permit. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Pewter Sound Energy to waive and release cash surety for a deferral permit, number DEF 18006311, and add the funds to the 116th Avenue Southeast Sidewalk Improvements Project located near the Family First Community Center. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
That was the final finance report.
That was the final one?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Albertson.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has one report to present.
I'm sorry, I skipped the person virtual. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, the, uh, let's see, we just don't have any unfinished business.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Albertson, sorry about that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this might sound familiar, the Utilities Committee has one report to present.
Second.
Appreciate that.
Ignore me, I'm sorry.
All right, Utilities Committee Committee Report, it's in agreement with Cascadia Consulting Group. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute an agreement with Cascadia Consulting Group in the amount of $265,000 for solid waste planning and technical services. This is signed by the committee chair and member and approved virtually by Councilmember Rivera.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Albertson.
Move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Now I second.
All right, it's been, it's been moved by Councilmember Albertson and seconded by Councilmember Rivera twice. That the, that the council concur with the Utility Committee Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. That was painful, but we got through it. We're on to legislation.
Mr. Mayor. Did Councilmember Rivera? No, no, he's guilty.
You have none, yes.
No. The Community Services Committee has no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect, now we're on to legislation. This is messy.
It's okay.
It's gonna be messy.
It's okay.
Not our finest work.
So we have four ordinances for second and final reading. The first one is regarding Docket Item D Two Twenty-Six Home Occupations. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsections four, four, ten, I, four, eight, seven, zero, D, four, eight, eight, zero, G, four, eight, nine, zero, C, one, four, eight, one, twenty, C, four, eight, one, twenty, D, eight, and four, nine, ninety, A through F, four, ninety, one, hundred, J, amending section four, eleven, eighty of the Renton Municipal Code, repealing and replacing subsection four, nine, ninety, G of the Renton Municipal Code, adding new subsection four, nine, ninety, H to the Renton Municipal Code, amending home occupations regulations, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is a second reading, so it requires a roll call.
Council President O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries.
All right, the next ordinance is regarding Docket D Two Twenty-Nine Eating and Drinking Establishments. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsections four, two, sixty, I, four, two, eighty, A nineteen, four, two, eighty, A twenty-six, four, two, eighty, A twenty-seven, four, two, eighty, A thirty-one, four, two, eighty, A thirty-four, four, two, eighty, A eighty, four, two, eighty, A eighty-one, four, eleven, forty dot M, M, sections four, eleven, thirty, four, eleven, fifty, four, eleven, sixty, and four, eleven, two, thirty, of the Renton Municipal Code, amending regulations for eating and drinking establishments, food-related drive-through service, and defining new terms, including coffee stand, commissary kitchen, and walk-up window, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I always feel bad for Jason at the end of the year. With that, I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is the second and final reading, so it requires a roll call.
Council President O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Van. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
And Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
carries.
All right, the next ordinance is Docket Two Thirty-One Code Interpretations. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsections four, two, sixty, D, four, two, sixty, G, four, two, eighty, A eighty-eight, four, two, eighty, A eighty-nine, four, two, one, ten, A, four, two, one, ten, C, four, three, fifty, C three, four, three, ninety, D two, C, four, three, ninety, E one, four, six, sixty, D, four, nine, one, ninety, C one, four, nine, two, fifty, C five, and four, eleven, forty dot Q Q of the Renton Municipal Code, amending sections four, eleven, eighty, four, eleven, one, ten, four, eleven, one, sixty, and four, eleven, two, hundred of the Renton Municipal Code, codifying administrative code interpretations from July first, 2022 to July fifth, 2023, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is second and final reading, it requires a roll call.
Council President O'Halloran. Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
And Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries.
All right, and the final ordinance is regarding the point one percent sales tax for the Renton Transportation Benefit District. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, adding a new section five, twenty-seven, thirty-five to the Renton Municipal Code, imposing an additional sales and use tax of one tenth of one percent within the boundaries of the Renton Transportation Benefit District for the purpose of financing the costs associated with transportation improvements in the district as authorized by RCW thirty-six, seventy-three, zero, six, five, and RCW eighty-two, fourteen, zero, four, five, five, providing for severability, authorizing corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is second and final reading, it requires a roll call.
Council President O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
And Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries, and we're on to new business. We're gonna start with Council President O'Halloran.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have several areas of new business. Anybody wanna apply to be a city clerk? You see what you will be. It's an amazing talent, amazing. Um, I wanna take a point of privilege here and just thank the community and my fellow council members for the opportunity to serve you this year as your council president. It's been an absolute honor, a learning experience, and I appreciate your support and your guidance, and, um, thank you. So with that, on December eighteenth, Monday, there are no council meetings scheduled. It is a council holiday on Monday, December the twenty-fifth, which is Christmas Day. We are not having any meetings also for the Christmas holiday, and I'm gonna let our incoming president take the January assignments.
Uh, yes, on Monday, January first, two thousand twenty-four, it's New Year's holiday, so there's no meetings. And then on Monday, January eighth, at five thirty PM, the committee at the hall will be meeting in council chambers and by video conference. There are two items on the agenda. Allocation of lodging tax funding for 2024, the Washington State, and the Washington State Department of Transportation update. And then at seven PM, um, we'll have our council meeting, which will also be on council chambers and by video conference, and since we kinda did this out of order, um. Evening of the night. I wanna.
Don't say wrong with everything else tonight.
I wanna thank Council President Valerie O'Halloran for her service this year as our council president. Making the way.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is all.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes. I, um, first of all, yeah, Jason, I don't know if you noticed that you were in different order than the mayor. So.
You know this.
That is very unique, that never happens, so this is tonight. But I just wanted to, to say a few words, um, to President O'Halloran. It has been an honor and a pleasure to work with you this year. It was a very challenging year in so many ways, but I had to give her kudos because she was not just an incredible president, but also, at the same time, she was the chair of the RFA, the Renton Regional Fire Authority. Very challenging to have those positions the same year at the same time, and she excelled and did absolutely an incredible job. Part of this job, and part of the reason why you're doing, did it superb, is because your capacity to keep good relationships with your colleagues, with executive branch, with administrators, and respect the staff. So, thank you very much, Valerie, and, uh, and thank you much for your support and always being there when we call you, you always answer the phone. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we're gonna get back in line here and go, Councilmember McGurven. Any business? We're gonna continue.
You were over in there. We're gone with it, committed now, yeah. Okay, I have no new business to know.
Councilmember Prince.
I just did mine.
Yeah.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, eighth, twenty twenty-four, at four fifteen, the Planning and Development Committee will meet in the council conference room as well as via video conference. There are two items on the agenda. First, planning update, and second, emerging issues in CED. Also, Mr. Mayor, if may I, um, um, today was my last day as a board member at the RFA, and I don't wanna say my last day, it was my last meeting during this term as a member of the RFA. It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve in this organization. It is incredible, the job that they do, and, and the staff, and the firefighters, and the chief, and the leadership team is, is an organization that I saw from the beginning, and today I can say that, um, it is a, a real, I feel really proud as a Rentonian to have such a commitment team, um, for the safe of our city. I want to thank Councilmember Mark Kirvin because she, he decided to step down from his term, um, to give me the opportunity to be there, uh, another year, uh, to, for, for the council to rotate every year instead of changing three board members at the same time, which was very challenging for the RFA. Needless to tell you guys, how much I learned from this organization, and, uh, and this morning was very emotional because, uh, we went through everything during the pandemic. So, anyway, I told them I will be back, I don't know when, but I will. I'm not going anywhere, I'm here. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move, uh, that Councilmember Kirvin, we be, be elected for the RFA board meeting from January first, twenty twenty-four, to December ten, two, December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. The motion, it's been made by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember O'Halloran, to appoint Councilmember McGurven to the RFA board for the term starting January first, twenty twenty-four, ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Any discussion? All in favor signify by... Yes. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that as we rotate and having the opportunities for the council to be on different boards, I would like to recommend our Councilmember Rivera to have an opportunity to be on the board. I know that Councilmember McGurven had an opportunity, and I know that as a young member, uh, not in age, but it's younger than the newest, one of the newest members on the council. I think it's good for her to have an opportunity. And when you look at leadership, I think it's important to mentor and bring up, we were council members. So I would, uh, ask my colleagues to have Councilmember Rivera be a part of our thing.
We have a, we actually have a motion on the floor to, um, to vote on. Yep. Any other discussion? Okay.
Well, I appreciate, may I, Mr. Mayor? I appreciate that nomination, Councilmember Van. I do appreciate, um, everything that you've just said. It seems though, um, we have already, it may have already have been, um, under discussion and decided from what it seems. So, though I do appreciate that, I will pleasantly allow things to fall if they will.
All right. Uh, any other discussion? Okay. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, we have one nay. Okay, motion carries. And... That was... Councilmember Van. Councilmember Van.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any new business. I just wanna take the opportunity to share with our community and to thank community for commenting today as well as last week, but also to share that as we celebrate the holiday, I was able to celebrate with our tuitioner community, uh, with their, uh, I mean, the menorah, the happy, uh, day at the landing. It was a great community-building opportunity. And, uh, just wanna wish everyone a happy holiday.
Councilmember Elverston.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, wanna announce that on January, Monday, January 8th, uh, at 2:45 p.m., the Community Services Committee will meet in the council conference room and via video conference. At this time, there's only one item on the agenda, and that is appointments to Renton Municipal Arts Commission. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Strike out everybody here. Councilmember Rivera.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have any new business, though I do want to give my flowers to Council President O'Halloran. In addition to being the chair of RFA, to being the president of the council, she also meets regularly with the mayor, but also with any council member who wants to meet with her, which, she definitely took me up on every opportunity. We met regularly. She was an incredible mentor, and I just really appreciate all the time and energy you gave, not just in the chambers, but outside of the chambers, to provide your experience, your guidance, your intellect. You, in my opinion, are probably one of the best, most professional council members I've ever worked with in my time, or known in my entire time in the city of Renton, in my whole 34 years. So, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. Back to me.
Yes. Councilmember.
The Finance Committee will be meeting on Monday, January 8th, at 3:30 in the afternoon. We have two items on the agenda. First is vouchers, and second is emerging issues in finance. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, that's everybody, right? It's a wild one. All right. Well, uh, before we go, um, I wanna thank the Renton Regional Team for showing up and sitting through the entire, uh... Enjoying our show tonight, so, um... What's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move that council meeting recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss labor negotiations pursuant to RCW 42.3.1404B, with no official action to be taken, and that the council meeting will be adjourned when the executive session is adjourned. And I am no Jason Seth, as you can tell.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss labor negotiations. No actions will be taken, and we will be, um, adjourning directly after that meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.